Our Father, in our heaven, how thou be thy name, that kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. And in the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mertz?
Here, yes.
Mr. Samuelson?
Yep.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum, please?
Motion. Second. Dudley, motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Samuelson?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mertz?
Yes.
Mr. Yerder?
Yes.
Okay, we're in public participation. We've got administrative, administrators' reports first. We have Brooke, Shelley Sowers.
So, we've been pretty busy the last, since the last board meeting. We just wrapped up our fundraiser. The fundraiser goes towards field trips and fun activities for the building. We had a banner year, which we were super excited about. It's the most we've ever raised on a fundraiser, so to kind of reward the kids. And I like to spend the money on the kids that raised it. They were getting homeroom t-shirts for our field day, and they'll all be different colors. So around the May tenth, if you go out to the football field those days, you're going to see a lot of bright colors as part of that. They're also got third grade going to the Bell Valley Farm in May. We have fifth grade going to the zoo next Friday. We have our special needs groups going to the horse at least twice, which is pretty awesome, because that's something that's been kind of on pause since COVID. Fourth grade just had their music program. They did an awesome job. That's the wrap-up for the music season in my building. Junk rope also just wrapped up. They had an awesome show there the end of last month. We finished up our alternate assessments and our OALPA, which is our, English is a second language for those students. So we finished up those, that testing, and we're getting ready to start our big state testing. The sixth and seventh are our first two days with that. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is, and I had both of these teachers here a couple of months ago, Mrs. Turner and Mrs. Batner. They just went through a very lengthy interview process with IMSC, which is the Orton-Gillingham Series, and they have both been accepted as district, district trainers and IMSC like leaders. I don't know the actual terms for it. So, we're like the only district in, I know, like a very large area that has not just one, but two trainers that will be good to go for this dyslexia law that's coming down. I know a lot of districts around us are really scrambling to even get just their staff trained, and we are way ahead of the game. Like, the first time in the ten years I've been here that we can say we have everything for that particular piece of legislation, which is pretty awesome. So I do want to mention them again. They have worked really, really hard and are doing an amazing job, and they're going to be an asset to the district when they're through with all of that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Byzville Elementary, Gail Thomas.
Okay, I brought Mrs. Jane Webb, who's sitting beside me. She's our title teacher, and she recently put on a reading, read-a-thon or a reading literacy day, and we actually did it during the day where all the kids could partake in. Sometimes when we do things in the evening, not everybody gets to be a part of it. So she has, and Sarah, thank you for doing the video.
I'm working on it.
Jane?
I can talk first, and then you can do it.
Thanks.
Yeah, but you want me to do it first?
No, you can talk first.
Okay. Actually, Read Across America Week was February twenty-ninth through March fourth. So for that whole week, we did activities in the building. We did, actually, I had, I sent an email or message out to parents, and we had parents record, and family members from all across the country sent videos in of themselves reading books for their students. So we had some videos that we shared with the kids. So like, we had people from Florida, and one from California, and one from Utah, like, family members that sent videos in. So that was kind of an idea that we did this year that was different. I stole it from my sister's kid's school, but it's okay, I just don't remember. We did, I had a reading challenge for the week where they had a paper. They had twenty, they had twenty activities to choose from. They just had to pick five to do that week. Fun things, like they had to read with a stuffed animal, or read to their pet, or just pick five things. And if they completed it at the end of the week, they got a pencil and some smarties for being smarties for reading. And then they drew a drawing. We had Buffalo Wild Wings coupons and plus-one pizza and different things they were able to earn. And then I did two different days. One day I had preschool and kindergarten who did activities in the morning, and the next day was first and second grade. And we had a book walk where every student in the whole school received a brand-new book that they got to pick. So a book walk, if you don't know, is kind of like musical chairs, where they walk around in a circle and the music plays, and then they stop. And when they pick a number, whoever's on that number is to pick a book. So they all got to pick a book. We did a Very Hungry Caterpillar necklaces, and they made one fish, two fish cookies, and Green Eggs and Ham with pretzels and M&amp;M's, and they had a lot of fun doing that. And we did dress-up days, where we had hat day, and a read-my-shirt day, superhero day, and of course, the spirit day. And, trying to forget my names. And that's pretty much it. So then I have some pictures that we took from that week, too.
Oh, wrong button. Sorry, guys. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Very nice. Okay, we have Mr. Ray, I think, from Metabrook Middle School.
First of all, from the middle school staff, Mr. Mertz, welcome to the team.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to have you on board. The first thing we want to talk about is something that actually happened district-wide. It just was brought up in our building today, and I thought it was a pretty incredible thing. We did the Vision to Learn program. This, what this entailed was a K to twelve eye screening for all students, and then for those who needed it and agreed to it, a free eye exam for students who could go out. They, this company who is grant-funded, no charge to the district, would come and give the kids an actual eye exam with the ophthalmologist. As a result, over two hundred pairs of free classes were given out in the last couple of weeks to our students. And I have to give all the credit to our nurse camera. She did all the work and all of that work, so I just wanted to point her out. And the other big thing at the middle school, you can start, whatever.
Oh, good.
Is my, as I told Mr. Humphrey, my two-hour-and-thirty-eight-minute presentation on Washington D.C. So we finally got to reinstitute our Washington, D.C. trip this year. And they got to go see all the memorials, World War II Memorial, Washington Lake Memorial. They got to go visit the White House. Keep politics out of it, they got to go see the House. Capitol Building, Smithsonian's. And then they ended with a trip to Gettysburg, a tour of the battlefield, and the 3D display that they actually do. Yes, they did get to do shopping, and you'll start seeing that all the kids bought a different sweatshirt than they ought to, except for my FBI agent there. That is some, the new air and space. It's not the Smithsonian, it's a separate, they actually have a, what is it called?
No, not.
Oh, okay. So just a few shots to show what I already figured, got to get back at. We really like taking our kids out there, and no problems or anything. We appreciate all the support we're sending the kids there. I guess keep the politics out of that slide. Focus on the orange. And contrary to popular belief, there was a rumor going around that sweatshirts were going to be blue. I'd never do that to y'all.
JP, could you hum or something?
Can I hum?
Yeah.
Listen, I'm not a music guy anymore. I don't think I was that good at the humming and singing part anymore.
Medieval times, JP?
Yeah, they did go medieval times one night.
That's nice.
Apparently, some Snapchats were exchanged between us and another school from Ohio. I don't, I don't ask. But everybody had a good time.
How many kids went?
Eighty eighth graders went. So it was good, it was a good year for that. That's actually one of my favorite parts of the trip, is the human soldier. And that should be it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, JP.
All right, we have Metabrook High School, Mr. Detra and Mr. Wheeler.
Actually, Mr. Wheeler's going to handle all of it.
Yep, I want to go into the high school and the athletic stuff all in one here. Two weeks ago, Mr. Bates and the music department put on the Coral Dinner, a performance. They do that every year, and it was a huge success again, again, this year. Attendance was really good with that. I want to give a shout-out to our two counselors, Mrs. Cantor and Mrs. Wester. For the last month, and they don't do this at every school, and I think it's amazing for our students, but they meet with every student individually and go through their schedule next year and let the kids bet, hey, this is what I want. Now give me your second choice, and third choice, and fourth choice. So, and they work really, really hard on their schedule to get the kids in classes that they want. So they pretty much individualize four hundred schedules at the high school, which is unbelievable. They've been working on that for the last month. They should be finalizing that here, hopefully in a couple of weeks. This Saturday, if you're interested, the BAM program has a vendor fundraiser in high school cafeteria. I texted Mr. McConnell on the way here. I'm not sure when it starts, but that is this Saturday. Really, at the high school, the last month, our teachers have been settling in with the kids. We finally got some consistency of being at school, and really been working hard on the state test. I mean, that's how, that's how we're graded. That's how kids get their points to graduate, or one path for them to graduate. So it's a really, really important time for us. That starts April fourth. We begin our testing season. We're going to be going for two weeks, April fourth through the fourteenth. During that time, the high school will be on a two-hour delay. We do that so the kids that are testing can be in smaller testing groups. And then obviously, it creates a great learning environment and gives them the best chance to be successful during testing, because we don't have, the kids that are testing are making a lot of noise and this, that, and the other. When we wrap up testing season, National Honor Society is going to do a volleyball tournament and a hot dog eating contest on the fourteenth. So if you're available, you guys can come out and watch me win both of those events. But that's really all, all we have at the high school. Athletics, it's a unique time, we're in between seasons. Just to recap on the boys' basketball season, I think last time we met, they were going and playing in the district final or something, but it is unbelievable. Five of the last six years, we've been district champs. And I looked, there's only three other schools in the state of Ohio that can say that. So we've been really, really, really fortunate here. Have had great kids and great coaches, but the boys' basketball team had another great season. And then spring's here, tracks this Saturday. Supposed to be beautiful weather, so if you're interested, I'm coming out. I might need some snow boots. And then baseball, softball starts Monday, so it's here.
Thanks, Mr. Wheeler.
Yep.
All right, special education.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mertz, welcome.
Thank you.
Springtime's a busy time for intervention specialists, our administrators, and our teachers. We really appreciate them at this time of the year. We have enjoyed hosting in-person meetings once again. We enjoyed the Zoom, but we're really glad to be welcoming the parents and students back to the table to discuss annual meetings, having our ETRs, which are evaluation team, report meetings to learn all about their progress that they've been making. And of course, we're continuing, because of these last couple of years, everyone, we're continuing to ramp up our testing for special education services when we get referrals from our principals and our teams and our teachers to provide services that are needed for students across the district. And we appreciate the administration and the teachers, and especially our hard-working intervention specialists. Our intervention specialists have also taken upon themselves to get right on board and start taking some field trips. So as Mrs. Sowers said, we have some equine therapy trips going on. It was very difficult, because all the schools in the area are trying to get on that schedule. Some of ours have done a great job of doing that, so we'll be taking some customized equine therapy trips with our custom special needs transportation that we appreciate the district offers our students. So everybody gets to participate. We also finished up our alternate assessment testing. That, that window is coming to a close here in April, and our intervention specialists, parapros and building principals and leaders have been helping get those tests done, so we appreciate that. And we've been working with our guidance counselors. As our students transition from Brooke to the middle school in fifth to sixth, as well as eighth to ninth, we really rely on our guidance counselors and our building leaders to make sure that we're scheduling early on to give those building principals the numbers that are needed to be in certain classes. So we, we work really closely with that, and we've come up with some Google Docs and some methods so that we can share that information and make sure that our students, when they come back, and some of them will tour even, to make sure that transition to the new building is a smooth one. And we appreciate getting a hold of the schedules early on, going over it with them, so we aren't missing anyone and getting them in the right classes as they transition. And last but not least, I'm super excited. Organizational meetings have been being held for cold club track. So as Mr. Wheeler said, it's cold time out at the track, but they're ready to go. We have some, we're hosting the practices, because we have probably the best track in the county. We are hosting the practices for all three schools. So the kids will get a chance to practice with their peers and other school districts in preparation to join their peers in three different track meets that they have scheduled. One at Cambridge location, one that we'll be hosting at Metabrook, and then they'll be also able to run and compete at Buckeye Trail. So that'll be coming up in April. So we're really excited about that. That brings out a big crowd, as our basketball did as well. But we're excited for our students, because they're running right along with their peers, they're practicing with their friends, and they're learning all about the track and what that can, all the opportunities that they have. So an exciting time for the kids in the spring, so hopefully, if you're out at the track meet, you'll look at, see that, it's a great time. Our coaches have been working, like I said, with the county Board of DD to help that, those events go off smoothly and have enough support and instruction for everybody out there to try whatever sport they want, whatever event they want.
Good.
Thanks, Judy.
Molly's not here, so we'll go into item B, which is public participants. And we have some representatives here from the village of Byzville. I'll open it up.
I'll let him open it up. Well, it's good to be here tonight with you. My name is Brandon Dudley, I'm the administrator for the village. The news has kind of got out about some of the interest we have in Byzville Elementary, and so I just kind of want to do a presentation for you tonight, talk about, you know, some of the things that we've discussed internally. And this is actually not a new discussion, per se, as far as Byzville's interest in the elementary school. It's kind of an ongoing discussion. It may be new for some of you. I'll just tell you, I'll just search the slide again. But I, I think the mayor and I was here probably five years ago, six years ago, when the first discussion of building new schools started. And, you know, we kind of expressed interest in, as far as what would be the future of Byzville Elementary and how that affects the village of Byzville. So that's, I think, really what we're talking about is the future when it comes down to it. Just kind of, this presentation I also gave at council last night, so I apologize. Some of this is probably information you guys already know, obviously, but was prepared for both this group and council, so you can go to the next slide there. So what's the current status? Byzville Elementary turns a hundred years old next year. We know that. It looks like the district is looking to build new schools. I know that's still in the process, but that's, that's what you guys are working towards. So that's why we're, we're here. So the question becomes, what will happen to the existing schools, including Byzville Elementary? Obviously, that's near and dear to our hearts, because it's right in the heart of our village. Every day I look out of my office, I see kids play, and I see a building that has stood the test of time. And, you know, I understand that sometimes we've got to move on from those things as well. And I think that's where the district is at, as far as building new schools. So I understand that. So that's the current status. And when it comes down to it, I mean, we're really talking about demolition versus preservation. You know, when you talk about preservation right now, that's a big movement that's happening throughout our country, especially in downtowns like the village of Byzville, where you have a lot of history there. And you, you take a town like Asheville, North Carolina. I don't know if you're familiar with the Strong Towns movement, but, you know, they talk a lot about preservation. And those cities and villages and towns that have persevered through some of the tough times of the past, such as the sixties and seventies, where they, you know, the, the hot thing was to go out and build shopping malls and things. It was tough for them, but they persevered, and, you know, their, their towns have been stronger because of it. Their, their downtowns are coming back, and they're revitalizing these old buildings, rehabilitating them, and it's, it's really turning into a movement that you're seeing all across the country. Go to the next one. So, and these are all-inclusive options for the, for Byzville Elementary, but they're just some ideas. You know, you have an idea to sell the building. Some of the questions you might ask, who, who would you sell it to? Who would it fit? You know, who would be able to use that type of building? How much would you sell it for? And what would they do with it? One of the things that I think is important to consider is Byzville is a zoned community. So you just can't do whatever you want, wherever you want. Byzville Elementary resides within the area called community business. And there are a lot of things you can do in community business that are commercial and business-related, but there are also a lot of things that you cannot. And, you know, I mentioned last night in the council meeting, you know, visual impacts, traffic, those types of things. One of the things that is a permitted use in community business is storage buildings. And, you know, we work really hard in the village to rehabilitate our downtown, revitalize our downtown. If you've been down through there in a while, I mean, there's a lot of new facades, new facelifts on buildings. And to think that, you know, somebody could come in, tear down a hundred-year-old school, and put up storage buildings, and that's going to be the impact that people are going to see when they first come into Byzville, that, that, that really hurts my heart. So, you know, but those are, they're things to think about. Obviously, another option is to demolish. You know, of course, you have to weigh the cost of demolition in there. I know that you guys have done a lot of work on that, a lot of research. You know, that's a cost that, you know, I see a lot. We're involved with the county land bank and such, and that cost has risen tremendously. Like a lot of things, when you have diesel at five dollars a gallon, you know, trucks hauling debris away, and those types of things, that, that cost has went up. I can tell you, in two thousand and nineteen, the city of Cambridge wanted to demolish a, one downtown building, which I would say would be maybe a third to a fourth the size of Byzville Elementary. They had to build it out three times. The first bid came in at like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, you know, when you start looking at that, I, I mean, I, just an estimate, somewhere between two and three hundred thousand. Of course, you know, my understanding is the district would have to pay fifty-one percent of that. So that's kind of a good deal there. But at the same time, you know, the district would have cost involved in demolishing it. And then the last option, obviously, is you could do nothing. But, you know, if you, if you do nothing and have a plan for nothing, then my concern is that building sits there, it dilapidates, it deteriorates very quickly. We know that with old buildings, we've seen that even with buildings in Byzville. So I, I, out of all the things that I ask from you, the do-nothing thing is probably the worst thing that could happen. So, you know, I realize, obviously, this decision lies with the school board, but, you know, that, that would just be a shame to see that happen.
And I mentioned that the other night. You know, I didn't want people to think, we don't want that as a, as a board of education. We, you know, I mentioned it in the meeting, I said, listen, if, if, you know, we don't do anything with it, sits there, nobody wins. You know, the community, Byzville, everybody, it's like, what, what did they do? Why did they just leave that set empty?
Sure.
So we have no plans from our discussions of anything like that.
Good.
And at the time, the meeting the other night, I didn't know Byzville had so much vested interest in purchasing this school or having, you know, plans for it. So this is all a good thing, you know what I mean? This is a good thing that we can work together and come to some kind of terms. You know, that Byzville wants this and wants to keep it.
Sure.
Hopefully, like it is. I mean, that's a win-win for all of us, it really is.
Yeah.
So.
So currently, in Byzville, you know, it's quickly become a place that entrepreneurs want to be in, Gurnee County. Since late two thousand and nineteen, actually, we quietly added fifteen new businesses in the village. And for a village of our size, that's, that's a lot of things happening in a very quick amount of time, especially giving, given the times that we've, we've lived through with COVID. We still have businesses coming to town, and the mayor and I have our phones ringing every day. So those are our great position to be in from the village perspective. If you drive through downtown, once again, you can look, and you can see some of the facelifts, some of the buildings there, rehabilitated, renovated. They continue to be that way. The village actually just sold a building last year in downtown that we had had for several years, and we actually gained it through tax foreclosure. And we put it out for bid, and we sold it to Gurnee County CDC. They have a tenant ready to move into that building. So that's at one eighty-three South Second Street. It's about the only building down there that hasn't had major work done to it. But between now and the end of the year, you're going to see a lot of things happening there. So as far as the entire downtown's really had work done, and that's, obviously, you can see a visual impact there. You know, Project Phoenix, I don't know if you've heard about that, but that's been our revitalization initiative through the downtown, and it certainly has gotten word out and energized Byzville economic scene. The idea behind Project Phoenix is we received some private funding from an individual here a couple of years ago, who came to me and said, I would like to invest in, in Byzville. And so the mayor and I worked together. We came up with Project Phoenix, which is a cooperative grant between essentially the CIC, who, who the money is, is funneled through, and, and the village. So if you want to do work on your building downtown, you can apply for a Project Phoenix grant that'll provide up to fifty percent of funding, up to twenty-five hundred dollars for the project. And so that has been very big for our downtown, and that's where you've seen a lot of this work come from. So basically, right now, we've had twenty thousand dollars privately invested, and that's been net with, and these numbers are actually a little bit behind. They're, they're a little bit higher than that now, with about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of private investment for property and business owners. And that's created about seven hundred thousand dollars in increased property value. So those are great numbers to, and I, I feel like they're probably really conservative numbers more than anything. You can even see a building, the old Fabre Form building, that building's literally set empty for over forty years. And now there's two tenants in that. That's happened in the last couple of years. These are just some of the pictures, obviously, as you go by every day, you can see that. Some of the ones at the top there are the before pictures. The ones at the bottom are the after pictures there of some of the work that's been done. And there's some more of the pictures there. The building where Pure Love Bakery is, there at the bottom, that was actually just done in the fall of last year, I think. So, so it's, we certainly still have a lot of good momentum in that. So what's the future of... the future of Byzville? Obviously, the future is very bright. And, you know, at some point, though, we're quickly running out of options to locate new businesses. And, you know, I would go one step further and say, not only the future for Byzville is bright, but the future for our community is bright. And that has a lot to do with what you're doing in this room right here. And, you know, working together for the good of our community is always at the forefront of everything that we do, and I'm sure it's at the forefront of everything that you guys are thinking about. But I don't want to downplay the decisions you guys make absolutely impact, not only the district and the schools, but, you know, our community as a whole, and even the economic impact that that has. So the acquisition of Byzville Elementary would expand the economic opportunities for our community, and I'll talk about how that will work here. Go ahead to the next one there. So what we're looking to do is repurpose Byzville Elementary as an extension of the downtown. It would be basically a hub of commercial and community activity. Go to the next one there. Classes would be repurposed for retail or other mixed use. One of the things that we, there was a poll that was put on Facebook here a few days ago, and overwhelming, I don't know if you've seen that poll, it's on, you know you're from Byzville, and 94% voted for it to be repurposed. But more than that, there was a lot of good comments, a lot of good ideas. Some people mentioned, you know, exercise-style rooms and aerobics and those types of things. Obviously, I don't do a lot of that, so I'm sure somebody will use the room for that. But the cafeteria, we'd be looking to repurpose that as an additional sit-down style restaurant or, you know, eatery of some kind there. The gymnasium, obviously, continue to serve for youth league sports, also uses as a reception hall, space for community events such as concerts, movie nights, and the weather. That seemed to be a lot of the comments from the Facebook poll. And then the long-term plans would be, you know, you've heard of Cambridge Main Street. That's actually a national organization, and you have to apply for membership for that. And that's something that we've discussed on and off for several years. But in order to do that, you have to have a downtown of a certain size. And so one of the things that acquiring Byzville Elementary, we feel like that would extend our downtown enough that that's something that we can apply for membership in the future. And there's a lot of funding and, you know, organization that can go behind the Main Street program. So one of the things we thought that if we acquired Byzville Elementary, that the long-term plan would be to maybe use that as the headquarters for the Main Street program. So funding, obviously, everything takes money. The good thing about what's going on right now is federally, statewide, there's a lot of money for downtown revitalization. There's a lot of money for rehabilitation. I mean, that's the movement that's happening right now. You know, they've also proved that that's the most cost-efficient way to build a downtown. That's the most cost-efficient way to build your economy, is to use the buildings and structures and facilities that you have currently and expand on those to make them profitable. So I don't want to mention individual grants, but just right off the top of my head, there's about four to five grants that I could apply for tomorrow for this type of project. I don't want to mention them specifically because they're very competitive. And even though I know Mike works with us really well, I don't want him going on the radio, and the next thing you know, the city to the north of us applies for a grant. One of the other things that could happen is, is we can put that on the registry of historic places and possibly use historic tax credits in the future. And it's a little bit of a complicated process, but it's well worth it in the end. Long-term support for the facility would be maintained through the rental of the facility. And look, just in some of the numbers that we've run, this is not a million-dollar-a-year business. It's not. That's not the type of thing this is going to turn into. This is something that really, from our perspective, is looking to pay the bills. I've talked to Candy to find out what some of the utility costs are there. And I feel that, you know, we could make that happen. But that's how we will look to maintain it. Obviously, we know decisions have to be made soon. You know, from our perspective, grant cycles are usually about two years. So the grants we started applying for right now, you know, by the time they're ready for award and dispersment, we're a year and a half to two years out. So we can't wait for two years and then say, oh, yeah, here you go, here's your building. Because then we have two years to wait to get this ball rolling. So, you know, that's our perspective on that, is we want to kind of get rolling right away, so that when you guys are ready to move south there, and you have the new schools built, we're ready to move in and get done with these things up there. This is just kind of a picture of what we, a vision of what we might see there. We're figuring 10 to 13 retail spaces, mixed-use spaces there, the restaurant that I mentioned, and the reception hall there. So, surely, any questions?
I guess, from my perspective, with the timeframe, you know, what are we looking at on the school? We're looking at a three-year. That's going to put us in a pickle with your timeframe, you know, because obviously, we can't do anything as a board if we still have students there.
Sure. And I don't want to mislead anybody. We're looking at a $2 to $5 million shortfall right now. Is that what the estimates say?
All right, right now it's probably more.
Yeah. So this economy, what COVID did to us, puts setting us back a year and a half. We have some very, very tough decisions to make as a board. We're very short.
Sure. I love the idea. Like I said, up until recently, I didn't know Byzville had, when we polled our teachers and our staff, everybody's like, we'll tear it down, sell the property. You know, I think overwhelmingly, if you read, I read through them, and it was a lot. But like I said, I didn't know what Byzville had in mind. I think it's a great idea. It's just going to be a timing thing. As far as if we can get the money now, and we can get the schools started, is it going to work with you guys' plans? You know, it's going to be a...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I don't want anybody to think, you know, Byzville, obviously, that's the best plan for all of us. I mean, everybody wins, especially if you can go in there and have a cup of coffee. And, you know, that's what, that's the world we're living in now, you know?
And you're paying the $2 to $5 million.
Yeah.
Awesome there.
So I, I mean, I think with me talking, you know, I've talked to all of you now. We've talked, and we have no problem with something like this. I mean, really, it's the best for everybody. And it's just going to be a timing thing now, if we can get this...
And when I say two years on the grants, I guess what I'm getting at is that, you know, once you make that decision, then we can start our recycle process. So whether that is, if you're in there three years, then we know at that point, you know, roughly three years, you guys are going to be leaving that facility.
We could commit at that point, yes.
Yeah, we need to be ready to move in there.
Yeah, I've got no problem. I don't think, like I said, a lot can happen then. But right now, the Board of Education we have, I don't think anybody would have any type of problem with that. I didn't want, by doing what we would do, if you guys can purchase that and do it, I mean, it saves the district a lot of work, too, on, you know, getting bids and going through all the demolition part.
Yes.
And Candy showed me some figures here earlier. And I apologize, I didn't have these until tonight, but Candy, you know, so the demolition...
Our share.
Our share was going to be $84,000. Now, this is five years ago.
Right.
So like you said, $5 diesel. And, you know, so you're probably looking at, you know, a substantial increase in that.
I'm sure.
So this is a win-win for everybody if we can do it, you know. And I appreciate you guys coming. I mean, like I said, it gives us all on the same page that way. We know what you guys are thinking. We know what we need to do, and...
Yeah, I guess we didn't really realize how, where the timing was at on the school, or else we would have been here earlier.
Yeah.
Like I said, it was a discussion we had maybe five years ago when...
It all started.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has been about a five years.
Yeah.
Six years.
Six.
Six, Candy's, yeah.
Maybe so.
Yeah.
Forever.
Yeah. So that's really, you know, once again, it's about working together, and it sounds like you guys...
I agree, yeah. And like I said, I mentioned the other night, the worst thing we could do as a district is just leave it set there and be, you know, nobody wins. You guys got to deal with people saying, look at that. That's all, you know. And then we got to deal with the fact we didn't make a move and do something. So it's a, it's a good idea. I mean, I respect the fact that you guys are willing to take on a project, and it says a lot about the Byzville community.
Well, and part of the reason that we are is because we're seeing that is the future. That is the progress. I mean, let's face it, we couldn't tear down that building and put a new building that would do the same type of thing for...
Oh, millions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's just not something that you're just going to see. And that's what you're seeing all across the United States.
Downtown Cambridge, like you said, you know, you have your little delis and coffee shops, and there's a chocolate place in town now. And I guess it's not uptown anymore, but you're right, that's the...
You know more about that than I do.
Yeah. Oh, I visit the chocolate shop once a while. But, so I like it. I do. And I appreciate you guys coming because, you know, I know it's a situation where you don't always hear the positives, but you guys are spending your time, and you could be home watching TV, and you're here doing this, so...
Sure. We appreciate you guys also.
Yeah, I know that.
I think, you know, as far as any sort of contractual things, we'd be happy to talk with you more, obviously, in executive as opposed to open session.
Yeah, absolutely. So, like I said, I have no problem if you guys want to meet in the very near future about that. But I do want you to know upfront, and I think you do, that this, this building project now could even be longer than we thought. I mean, I hope not. We all hope not, but, you know, we're going to do our best.
Sure. Well, we'll wait to hear from you.
Okay, that's fair.
Thank you.
Yes, that's fair. Okay. Again, thanks, guys. Thanks, everybody. A large thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Thanks for coming, fellas.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we're at treasurer's report. Candy?
Hi, I'm April Minus. I'm February 24th, and we're...
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
April Financial Report for February. Through then now, valid certificates for purchase orders greater than $3,000. A lot of these are like fundraisers that just wasn't put in until they knew how much was going back. The large hunting pen is a payment on the bonds we've all inherited. Then D is slapping Four Seasons Environmental as our commissioning agent. It's just a contract for the building project that we have to have. We approved two last meeting. It was the architect and the construction company. And that's it.
That's it. Do we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Hold me if Mr. Humphries.
Do we have a second?
Second. Mr. Dudley.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerber?
Yes. All right, we're to standing committees. Mike?
What?
Actually, yes. We need to, we need to get Mr. Moats involved in this before we go any further forward, so we can discuss that. Now, Mike's on policy by himself at this point. But if you have, how we've done this in the past, we kind of all kind of picked what we want to do, and if changes up, we try to change it up. But is there anything down there you're interested in, more so than anything else, and we'll try to work with you on?
I can do whatever is necessary.
The finest point, too. If you want to be part of negotiations.
Negotiations?
I will.
We got the first one.
I can't, listen, I've got an excuse, because I purchased the insurance through the school, so I cannot. I have an excuse.
I think he purchased it just so he wouldn't have to...
Yeah. So if you're comfortable, I mean...
I can do whatever is necessary.
We scheduled our first one. It's May 4th at 9:00 a.m.
That's right.
When the OC can...
Yes.
You good with that, then?
That's fine.
So Mr. Moats is going to do policy with Mike.
Okay.
With Mr. Humphries. I'm used to Mike now. We've been together a while. And then he's going to do personnel negotiations with Darren.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. And enjoy. Okay. Policy. Mr. Humphries, you have any?
No.
Nothing? Athletic is me and Brad. I don't have anything athletic.
I don't.
Legislative, student achievement, Mike?
Nothing.
MidEast?
I attend the meetings monthly. The only thing I can report there is we finalized, and they're starting to put in the school for the CBLs. And we've got the permission, and we will be to have a testing center as well. So people don't have to go to combat area to get their CBL license. So that should help with bus drivers, things like that.
It's going to be good.
Yeah, it's huge.
It is huge. It is huge. Okay. Mr. Moats, personnel.
Darren?
Darren, you have anything on personnel? Building and grounds, Mr. Dudley and Darren? Mr. Skinner?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Looking good down there.
Anything on audit?
They are finishing up. It should be done by the month. You'll get something on the post-audit once they're done, if you want to attend.
Okay, now I'm going to do something. Mike and I are in community outreach, and I'm going to do something a little different than we've done with this. Obviously, we've invited the unions here tonight, and we have the core group here and the board members. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Bullock called, and I talked to him about this. What I'd like to do at this point is open up to some question and answers. I know it's hard to get everybody at meetings, and I'm not trying to put anybody, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here, but there's times, Dennis was going to attend the meetings for the board, he's retired. You know, the rest of us have other commitments at times. So what I want to do, so we're on the same page, is try to meet monthly, and at the community outreach portion of this meeting, get together and just, you know, do some Q and A. I don't want to talk, you know, negotiations or contracts by any means, but if the union or anybody in here, in fact, at this point, has any questions concerning the building project, let's open up for some discussion. We have enough people here, hopefully, we can get answers and resolve some issues.
And I talked to Mr. Skinner and...
Cora.
Or Mr. Cornet, and they couldn't make it tonight.
Yep, I talked to them this morning.
So I told them, I said, come to the next meeting when we hit this point.
Yep, I talked to them this morning.
Does anybody ask questions?
We've agreed that from now on, the monthly meetings, until we change, we're going to have the core group here, as many of them as we can, representing that. So therefore, you know, I just think it's a good thing, because, you know, you hear these rumors out there. You hear this, you hear that. I think it'd just be good to open up for some discussion, keep it brief, and if you have anything.
And Stephanie came.
Stephanie came. So we're going to throw her out there because I knew she was going to claim...
What do you have to say?
Well, Omar, you need to, I would like to thank you guys for opening this up to us. And I appreciate, you know, I've seen some of the board members at the FAC meetings and things, and I do appreciate your involvement in that. I do think it's important for all of us to be together and hear the same things. So I do appreciate you taking the time to do this. I did meet with Todd Bates, and I met with the core team Tuesday, as I leave after school. So I'll just run through a couple of things that were brought up then, because I think these are some of the things that are most important to our teaching staff right now, and some of the current concerns. Some of them, I think we clarified in the meeting, one being, none of us were aware that the school was going to pay 51% of demolition. We thought that it was paid 100%, but that was talked about at the FAC meeting Monday night, and that was the first time that was brought to my attention. A couple other things, I know the middle school staff is concerned about not having windows. And Candy and I have talked, like, maybe the core team will meet with the middle school and discuss some of those things. They're concerned for safety reasons, you know, how are they going to get out? If the only way out is your door. And as well as, you know, natural lighting, we all know is good for your health. The special ed department has had several different questions, I think, across all levels, all ages, all age ranges. You know, there's definitely a wide range of population with our kids with special needs. You know, some of them are academics, some of them are more behavioral. And all of those things have to be addressed. You know, we have to be able to meet those kids' needs as well.
Except we are, we are planning to meet with special ed.
Yes, April 18.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Then the middle school, what we were talking about, I think, maybe a staff meeting would be the best way to get... Then, uh, middle school, what we were talking about, I think, maybe a staff meeting would be the best way to get all middle school teachers in one spot.
Yes. Can answer questions.
Um, unfortunately, Todd's at Cadare Practice, he couldn't, he was unable to come, um, and I talked to a couple of the other folks. Um, Jane, is there anything, like, from your building that?
No, I mean, those are the things from the meeting the other night that we had talked about, too, those were the main concerns, and obviously, the the class size issue has been a concern, cutting down to five classes when, you know, when we know that our kindergarten classes are big now and working their way, I mean, we we understand the the limit, the the square foot, and it's not that we don't understand that, it's just a an overall frustration that we have when you're building a new building and you want the best for the kids, and in your heart of hearts, you know, that's not what's best.
Yes.
Although you understand the limitations, it's a hard.
It's frustrating, yeah.
It's frustrating.
Remember, the state of Ohio tells us how big.
A complete, that's why I said, we totally understand that.
We can have, but it.
Yeah, I, we totally get that, but it's.
But that's where the frustration comes comes in, is the state's dictating.
The state's telling us what.
The bottom line is, it's not what's best for kids, it's not.
I can agree with that, like I said, there's times, you know, I've heard some different things other than this, and it's it's unfortunate, but we're just, it's like building a new house, but they're not letting you build your new house.
We're not getting to build it.
It's like, I want granite countertops, but you're going with something different because the state's not letting you, and I I don't know the answer, I mean, none of us do, and it's.
It's gonna be, put us in a situation where we can just add the money.
Right, I understand that, but but you guys have to understand, you probably haven't heard the end of it either, because it is a very frustrating point for all of our teachers.
Well, that's why we wanted to open it up.
Well, and even things like, now there's no library anywhere. Not not a library in a primary school building, that's insane to me. I think to most of the primary teachers, that's insane. And we all have, like, our own, um, accelerated readers.
I was gonna say, or even classrooms.
Libraries that we use, you know, books that we've purchased ourselves that are in our classrooms. Um, and, you know, I'm I'm fine with keeping those in my classroom, but, you know, there there's so many other things that should be opened up to the kids.
Then if we're moving into something new, that's supposed to be new and improved from what we have, I mean, I'm in a hundred-year-old building, and I think if I'm moving out of my hundred-year-old building, I want.
Better.
Better.
Not.
Than what I'm. Not settling for all that stuff.
And honestly, until we mention library, and I don't take this wrong, but, you know, I didn't know, I I haven't had time to sit down and look through, you know, every single aspect of this.
I just told Matt the same thing, I never thought there was no library.
Yeah, so and so this has been good, you know, from my standpoint already, because I didn't know, I didn't, honestly, so I'm not saying we can change it.
Right, right.
We don't know, but it gives us food for thought, you know.
Let's just look at it.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think there's already been some other things that, like, you guys have already talked to the music department, um, and the athletic department about, like, the middle school gym, the questions that we have with that. Um, a general trend in a lot of the emails is let the music department stay where they are, like, that seems to be the general consensus from all staff, like, why are we doing this to the music department? And I know you guys have already talked to them, I don't, you know, I don't know what the reasoning was or anything, but that's, I mean, I I, that's a huge deal to a lot of people.
And we just met with them on Monday, and, um, our, the architect went back through their space, I mean, but they left, they seemed comfortable with the space and everything that had been added.
Yeah.
I had two of them tell me yesterday at school, thanks very much for, uh, taking the time, and they feel a lot better after I met with them. Uh, Monday, a couple hours.
I think by opening up the lines of communication and and having everybody here is going to help things immensely.
Absolutely.
You know, and I know that you guys, the core team had a lot to go through starting out, and I I told you guys this the other night, like, I know you've spent hours upon hours upon hours delving into this, and we do appreciate the work that you've done on it so far. It's just, I think the communications could have been better sooner, and there might have been more understanding and more cooperation.
And the feeling, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just the feeling too is that nobody wants to feel ungrateful for any of it, because obviously, everyone wants a new building, I don't want, and that was kind of another common thing that everybody said, was everyone's very grateful for all of it, and the idea, you know, the new buildings and all of that, it's just, again, that feeling of, but, but it's not.
Yeah, no, this has been, like I said, I'm glad Darren, because a lot of this I didn't know, I I, you know, we try to attend what we can, but and I don't want this to supersede or or take any of the other meetings that are scheduled, we're gonna still go with everything, but I would just like to do this in the monthly meetings, if people show up and have questions, you know, and it just keeps us all on the same page. And like, I got nothing but admiration for the core team, you guys, I know how much time you guys have spent, I do. You know, and it's, a lot of times, it's overlooked and and, uh, it's it's unfortunate, but I do want the community, I've always been a big, uh, person with transparency and with people knowing, you know, uh, keep people informed. And if they don't come, shame on them, if they have questions, you know, shame on them if they don't come and and participate. But I I do want it to be open, and the board agrees, you know, so this is something I want to continue to do, you know, monthly meetings, and
Thank you.
It'd just be a, it just short and sweet, but it gives us something to talk about later tonight now, you know?
In your spectrum.
Yeah.
I have a question, um, you know, I've always been an early childhood. And right now, I have ten restroom stalls in the girls restroom at Byzville. And it, a a teacher will take their class down there, and depending on what kind of business the kids have to take care of, you know, it can take fifteen minutes for a group of children to go to the restroom.
And that's with ten?
That's with ten stalls.
Stalls.
In the girls restroom.
Okay.
And I have, I believe, eight urinals in the boys restroom plus five stalls. Same thing over there, because I went down in time the the other day. We have on this map that they're gonna have two stalls and one urinal. You're gonna have kids on restroom, you're gonna have a line like they have Cracker Barrel. So I just think, you know, that's that's unreal.
And this is all the, pardon me for not, uh, lack of, uh.
Every wing has.
Every. So this would be the grade school wing.
Yes.
There's gonna be two.
Also.
Okay.
Except for kindergarten, we have theirs in their classroom.
Yes.
In the classroom, I thought you guys.
I also taught kindergarten, and that's one, one for you, and maybe one urinal, but you can't put one girl there together. So it's not like, you know, kindergarten still needs to go out, and sometimes more than one of them's gonna have to go back there at a time. So I really think we're gonna be short restrooms, and that could be a nightmare.
Yeah.
I, all I'd say on that is, again, it's dictated, and again, I say it, you're gonna hear it a hundred million times, but the state says your population's this, this is how many that you can get.
I wouldn't even go a step further in saying that that's Ohio revised code, they go off the population of boys and girls within the building, that's how many.
So many stalls, so many urinals.
So.
See, that's sad. We pay.
Yes, that's one hundred percent.
They'll be LFI, a hundred percent are funded.
Well, then we're gonna have much.
I I, in my building, I have twice as many kids as she has, and I have two bathrooms, and there's not ten stalls total.
Well, you're not dealing with the.
I know, but I'm just saying, like, I think we can, with the amount of stalls and bathrooms that are in there, they look small, but I think we'll be fine. And on that side of things, I mean, these guys build schools all day long, we don't have people with new schools that are complaining about not having enough bathrooms. I think that's probably the least of our concerns at the moment.
I will go with the record as disagreeing with that. I think that's going to be a big problem, and so does everybody else in my building.
Like I said, that's why I wanted to do this, you know, it's one of those things, uh, we're not always gonna agree, uh, but it does give us food for thought, and it gives us something to talk about as a board, you know, and what we can maybe do to, a-again, I wish I could, I could just say, guys, this is all gonna be great, I don't know that it's gonna be, you know, and and unfortunately, with the bids, the way they come back, you know, we've talked as a board, uh, I'm not trying to be negative or say this won't happen by any means, but we've got our work cut out, Candy, uh, Mr. Golick, I want Devon involved at this point in some of it, you know, it's got a work cut out for us, you know, with the core group on, you know, what we're gonna do and and how we're gonna do it, but I don't think anybody's by any means saying we can't, but there again, money's gonna be the bottom, and and it's sad, it's sad.
Mr. Irak, something else that we discussed at the core meeting, um, Tuesday, as well as, and I don't know if the core team agrees or not, but I threw it out there, our preschool is not technically a Rolling Hills preschool. And while a dream comes true to have preschool included with us, if we're crunched for classroom space, um, you know, and teachers having work areas, we think it would be more beneficial to use those three classrooms for Rolling Hills classrooms. You know, and I know we haven't decided what what we're doing with Brook yet, but that was mentioned, like, why can't we put preschool at Brook? Let them rent Brook, or how, you know, however you wanna work that. Um, and I know, you know, they said you have to have a secretary and administrator if you have kids in a building. I don't know how we would work all that, but that, those are three classrooms that should belong to Rolling Hills, so they do belong to Rolling Hills, so Rolling Hills should be using them if we need them.
This is in the Brook School you're talking about?
Yes, well, this is in the new build.
Oh, the new build.
We've allocated three rooms for preschool.
Okay.
But I think if we're, you know, we have twenty-six, twenty-seven kids in each kindergarten class this year. If we have that again in three years, you're gonna crunch those into five kindergarten classes? That can't happen, that's not gonna work.
How many is there now, how many classes?
There's six kindergartens right now.
Six at twenty-six.
And six first grades right now. I believe there's five.
Second grades.
Five second grades.
Third grade. Yep.
We lost a second grade teacher last year.
And that goes back to, like, the the five years ago, six years ago, whenever we started the whole thing, and we all took, yeah, we took, like, the our decisions, our votes, and our discussion, and we wanted the preschool with us, because we have the preschool in our building now, and we, it's great to have them there, because it does help them that transition. However, we've talked to our preschool teachers who we consider, although they're not Rolling Hills, we, they're fully allocated, you know, they're the same, um, and and they agree with us, at the at the detriment of losing space for us, they agree that that's silly, if if it would be possible, they agree that they don't like taking the space away from us, if that would be a possibility.
And if it's possible to still have them on the same campus, then it's a very doable situation.
And that serve our public, who are who are really wanting to become part of our family at age three.
We get, I mean, there's waiting lists for preschool, so we can.
Long waiting list for preschool.
That we use Brook.
And let's remember why we have that preschool, that preschool is a special needs based preschool that gets us into the families' homes to provide that service at a very young age, so I I appreciate the talk on preschool, because I believe that's gonna benefit a lot of our families that really need that service on campus, wherever the core team.
No, it's 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 good information.
Well, and it's a struggle right now, like, we have some families, you know, that they wanna enroll their kids at at Secris for preschool, because that's where the rest of the siblings are, and they're full. So we have one parent that picks her child up in preschool at Byzville, then comes to Secris, you know, every day.
Next year, actually.
You know, so, I mean, we're not disagreeing that we should not be on one campus, but that would allow for more preschool families to be involved, you know, and still have our Rolling Hills kids being serviced the way they should.
And also, if you have other administrators in that building, do you really have to have a principal for that building? Or do you have to have a, um, licensed person that can run a preschool?
That's a good question, I don't.
I think, I think you can use.
Mr. Golick can check into that, that's a very.
In the past, when we had the preschool, and it was our preschool, we had a grant to run it, I think that's been probably before anybody that's in this room. Um, you probably remember it, they called it cradle to the grave.
Maybe we did.
But, um, that was a case where we had a center director that ran the preschool. Um, you didn't have to employ a principal, but at the time, the superintendent's office was also at Beach Grove when we ran it that way. So if you were to combine central s- office staff into that building as well, would that save money?
We've talked about that.
Yeah, you would still have to pay that director, though, so you're paying a director or you're paying a principal?
Right.
Either way, you're you're paying one hundred percent of the cost of whichever person.
The directors make not quite as much as you would have to pay a principal. At least they.
They, they used to not make as much, they, I mean, they're they're higher.
How is that paid now? Like, at least building principal paid a stipend because they're housed in that building or?
No, it's brand by the ECO, then you do have.
That's what I thought, so.
And they're not even there all the time, I mean, which.
Right, ECO, right.
That's why, you know how it's set up.
Yes, that's why I asked about. So there's not an ECO administrator there?
No, but what she was saying is a principal or a director. She was saying in the past, it's been a director, right now, we have a principal because they're at Secris stand by itself.
Right, okay.
I will check on that.
Thank you.
Well, I don't want this to carry on, I know Darren's gotta go back. Oh, Paul, don't. We had Steph's. But I, listen, I really respect what happened here tonight, appreciate it, you know, I don't want anybody to feel like they can't be heard in this, especially at this stage, nothing's been set in stone yet, I know we're getting close, but then again, we get setbacks. I had no idea when I heard about the building project five or six years ago, you know, I wasn't on the board when it initially started, you know, the old board and Mr. Caldwell. I had no idea we'd be five years, I, this is my, our fifth year on the board, and it's still in these talks, I mean, it's like, my God, nobody's fault, you know? So, with all that being said, let's try to do this, every monthly meeting, we'll carry on with all the other scheduled meetings, the way they are, with Candy and the core group and Mr. everybody, but I like this, it's 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 some good, good information. Yep, exactly, very good, okay?
Thank you.
Anything else real quick, 'cause Darren's gotta go clean. And like I said, let's, please, and I hope we can get some people from OC, you know, the next meeting, you know? We'll keep it, keep it real here and keep it transparent.
Thank you for listening.
Oh, you don't have to thank us, I I'm glad people come, 'cause like I said, I get a lot of questions, I can't answer a lot of them, 'cause I haven't got to sit down and and go through stuff like I I would like to, you know, okay? All right, uh, supervisory reports, nobody here? Any old business?
No, sir.
We are at the superintendent's report.
Okay, superintendent would like to, um, recommend letter A, which you can see the, uh, people being hired there. Letter B, approve early graduation applications, uh, as presented, approve maternity leave, uh, for Brooke Braden as presented, per approve maternity leave for Victoria Pointer as presented. Also, the district calendar is in there for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dis- uh, uh, calendar year. Prove overnight trips for the Meadowbrook Band, which is March twenty-first through the twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, that is in Florida. Uh, approve Neola policy, which are legal updates, um, that, uh, deal with curriculum money, and then me, so me and Molly and and Candy sat down and went through all the updates, so those are all updated and and as presented. Uh, we have two people, uh, that will be, one retiring, Diana Vox, and if you don't know Diana Vox, um, she's one of the nicest people I think I've I've met since I've been here.
Been a messer.
In Byzville, so we will, we will miss her greatly as a retirement. And I'll I'll be honest with you, uh, this next one, um, the resignation of Ms. Sarah back there, we are going to miss you, Sarah. You have done a lot, and your work ethic is second to none, and, um, you have done a fantastic job, so we we will miss you. And then approve the agreement with Omar Reese as presented, so superintendent would recommend letters A through J.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any, I'm sorry, Candy?
I have my stuff.
I'm going too fast.
No, you're good, you're good, you are one hundred percent.
Do we have any, uh, discussion? All right, rule call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Irak?
Yes. Any correspondence?
No, sir.
Any inform- information items?
No, sir.
All right, I'm gonna, uh, we're gonna go into executive cons- uh, sessions, consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law.
Before we do that, just, I I I do wanna mention Deb, yeah, I do wanna mention Deb Deb Gaten, who I don't, I mean, I I know many years, of course, I've only been here, you know, five total, uh, but she recently passed away, and and I know that, um, she meant a lot to the people at Secris, and not only Secris, but to other people in the district, so, um, our sympathy goes out to the family.
Thank you.
Of Deb Gaten, yes. Of Deb Gaten, yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, uh, what time do we have?
What's, what's the purpose for it, we're going into?
Uh, Candy's got some stuff, uh, we're gonna, it's, uh, information required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulate, regulations or state statutes.
Like personnel.
Personnel.
Personnel, thanks.
For me, yes.
And, yes, and I think Candy and the core team are gonna join us for a little bit here, too, so.
No action taken?
No action will be taken after executive session, so, uh, thank you, everybody.
Hey, did we do a motion second for that?
I haven't yet, no.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Humphrey?
Second? Rule call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Irred?
Yes. Okay, and you got the time in, done? Thanks, everybody.